Yes, very nice.
Very, uh...
Six fifty-nine, you got a minute?
I'm going to...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, Gavin and John.
Good evening. The twenty-fifth of June, Monday, two thousand and eighteen Council Meeting will commence with our invocation with Senior Pastor Gary McCollum from Heels Camp. Welcome to the...
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to invite your presence into this South Bend Common Council Meeting. Father, we thank you for those that serve and for those that have sacrificed to help to make this city of South Bend great and to elevate us to another level of excellence. Father, government was, is, and still is your idea. And so, Father, we ask for your wisdom and we ask for your guidance as this South Bend Common Council leads these citizens and leads this city under your direction and by your mighty hand. So, Father, we thank you for all that you're going to do in this city and for this city. And it is in the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like for our clerk to please take the role.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Tecka?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Wardy?
Uh, present.
Councilmember Furley?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott? Excuse me.
He's not here. Okay. Thank you. We'd like to have a motion on the subcommittee for us to table it until July the ninth.
So who?
Second.
All in favor of tabling the subcommittee minutes to July the ninth, say aye. All in favor of saying aye. It is carried. And a special business tonight. We have a resolution tonight. We would like to ask our presenters to come forth. First, Ms. White, Mr. McBride, Mr. Wardy. And we would like for our clerk to read our special business.
Special Resolution honoring Chancellor Terry Allison, Indiana University, South Bend.
Thank you. Now, Ms. White.
Yes, my name is Karen White. I live at nineteen twelve Melbourne, white here in South Bend. I am the at-large council member representing.
Thank you.
Sheriff McBride, four fifteen East Broadway Street, South Bend, on Third District, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
John Wardy, ten twenty-nine Claremont, South Bend Common Council at Large.
Wonderful.
I've had, I have the pleasure of presenting this resolution to Chancellor Terry Allison. I've had also the opportunity to work with all of the chancellors at IU South Bend. And I must say that Terry exceeds them all. It's, um, it's indeed an honor to be able to present this resolution. I've asked John Wardy to be part of presenting the resolution because he probably has been more involved with IU South Bend more than the forty-two years that I have been a member of the institution. I've also asked Sheriff McBride to be part of the presentation because IU South Bend resides in the Third District. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana commemorating and thanking Terry Allison for his time as Indiana University's South Bend Chancellor and wishing him the best as he pursues the next chapter of his life and career. Whereas Terry Allison came to South Bend as the Chancellor of Indiana University, South Bend in two thousand and thirteen after serving in several academic positions, including Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs at Governor's State University in Illinois, Dean of the College of Arts and Letters, and a Tenured Professor of English at California State University in Los Angeles, and several roles at California State University. Whereas Chancellor Allison received a PhD in Literature and a Master of Arts Degree in Comparative Literature from the University of California, San Diego, a Master of Library and Information Science Degree, and a Bachelor's Degree with Honors in Economics and Political Science from the University of California, Berkeley, and... Whereas Chancellor Allison has focused his love of education and devotion to students to lead Indiana University, South Bend for the past five years. And whereas under Chancellor Allison's leadership, the Health Sciences Programs greatly expanded, which in turn will lead to continued assistance in meeting the needs of South Bend's area medical community and...
Chancellor Allison's other major accomplishments at Indiana University, South Bend include increasing the four-year graduation rate, a growth of the honors and study abroad programs, overseeing the largest gift in campus history, which led to the naming of the Vera Z. Dwyer College of Health Sciences, development of a campus strategic plan that runs through two thousand and twenty, the renovation and naming of the Louise E. Atticott and Yati J. Joshi Performance Hall, the renovation of the first floor of the administration building into a hub of student services, full occupancy of River Crossing Student Housing, expansion of athletics from three to twelve teams in the National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics, establishment of a new home for the women's softball team, File Field, and... Yeah, sorry. Whereas the City of South Bend and its residents will forever be grateful for Chancellor Allison's leadership in the purchase of the Wooden Indian Motel and the Club Landing property, thereby... Thank you. ...thereby creating a safer and more inviting corridor into the City of South Bend.
And I can't tell you how long we've waited to purchase that building. Thank you, Chancellor Allison. Now, therefore being resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council proudly commemorates and thanks Chancellor Terry Allison for his lasting contributions to Indiana University, South Bend, and through the university, the greater South Bend community. Section two, the Common Council wishes Chancellor Allison continued success as he pursues the next chapter of his life and career. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and in effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor. We ask for your support.
Great. Thank you. I would like to start at my right and work my way over.
As a proud alumni of IU SB, I just want to say thank you so much for the leadership that you've given, much more than I even knew now that I heard the resolution. And I just want to say, you know, it's such an important institution to the, this community, the folks in South Bend. So many of our young people find their next level of education there. And to hear that you were a part of increasing that four-year graduation rate and making sure that we have the opportunity to have excellence at that next level is so important. And as a teacher, the Education Department, as you know, I think it's somewhere around seventy-seven percent of the teachers in South Bend Community Schools come out of that institution. So I just want to say thank you for all of the things that you've done. You've led this institution with grace and courage, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your tenure. And what an amazing position to be in on a day-to-day basis, influencing youth, just directing research arts, I mean, just everything that is encompassed within an academic institution to, to be able to impact the individuals, the community, your peers, and to drive things statewide too with regard to the IU campuses and therefore shape our entire state. So, thank you so much. Best wishes to you. I don't know where you're heading, but I'm sure you'll make just a, an extraordinary mark there as well. So wherever, their gain is certainly our loss, but you leave without, you don't leave without an amazing impact from your stud here. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just, I got what Councilmember Regina Preston Williams and Councilmember Broden said about just thanking you for all of that you've done for our community through your work at IU SB. I too am a alum of IU SB, and it's just such a crucial part of our community. And we have just been blessed with world-class educational facilities here at IU SB, not the least of them. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you, thank you for the Wooden Indian. And best wishes and everything that you do next.
Karen?
Yeah, thank you for your service and best wishes wherever you go.
Three of you all down there want to share something, because so many of you down there.
I just want to say thank you for your services as well, and it was an honor to be the Councilwoman of the Third District. So, best wishes to you and good luck to you.
Karen's right, I've been around for a long time. I was in the second graduating class at, at IU SB.
What?
Of those who got four-year degrees at that institution without having to get credits anywhere else. And last year, we came off the Jubilee Year, two thousand and seventeen, was the hundredth anniversary of classes being offered in South Bend from Indiana University, the fiftieth anniversary of the granting of the first four-year degrees, that was nineteen sixty-seven, and the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Rackland School of Arts, correct?
Wow.
I've seen chancellors come and go, and whoever follows this gentleman will have a tough act to follow.
Yep.
You can't, you just can't say enough about what he's accomplished while he's been here, and it makes us all proud to be part of it. Thank you very much.
Well, it's, um, I thought April, I'm sorry, August of last year was a tough time for me when I made the decision that it's time for me to retire. Chancellor Allison has taught me so much during his tenure, and his ability to handle tough issues with the grace and the professionalism is beyond noted. I mean, it's just amazing to me. And he has allowed me to be me, to really do the work that had been assigned to my hands during the time that I was a member of the staff there. I have enjoyed working with him. I wish him the very best. But again, I am so sad to see him leave IU South Bend because there's still much work to be done. And to come behind Chancellor Allison and to do what he's been able to do in a short period of time, it's going to take someone very tremendous. And again, I wish him the very best and always remember to keep rolling. That's a private joke. Thank you so much.
Chancellor, it's truly an honor to honor you tonight. I have seen you come into this community, and from day one, you got involved, even putting your name out there for school board and doing all those kind of things. I mean, education is truly your focus. And I didn't graduate from my USB, but that was my first teaching job from ninety-four to two thousand and three. I still go back every year to up in the social work department, and so, and that whole department has totally changed now with the BSW program and everything else. And so, when I, I was on campus a few days ago giving a presentation, and when I drove on, I just reflected what it was like years ago. I said, wow, this place is really booming, and it's amazing to just see it grow. You've been busy, and I'm glad to know that you're going to stay here for a hot second. You can share that. But I'm very grateful for your service, so best wishes to you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm so honored, and this was a surprise. When it came up on my calendar, I wasn't expecting this honor, but I noticed that you're not honoring just, just me personally, but all the, also the institution of Indiana University, South Bend, which, as was mentioned, deserves your full support as the council and as the city. I did tell the mayor that when we bought the Wooden Indian Motel that I wanted a ticker-tape parade. It's definitely close to the thing, and so, I'm waiting for the confetti to fall.
The van is waiting to be outside.
But thank you so much. I truly am honored. And, you know, I walked onto a college campus forty-five years ago to start college, and I've been working on a college campus almost that complete time. And it's, IU South Bend is a wonderful treasure for the community. I want to thank the city and each of you for your support, each of you as well. We've been working closely with the city, as mentioned. We were able to renovate a softball field right adjacent to campus, certainly helpful in looking at acquiring the properties along Lincoln Way. I think the campus looks forward to further cooperation with the city as we consider what kind of public-private partnership we might develop in order to rehabilitate that, that area. For now, it will be a nice grassy field with trees, but we're, we're hoping that we will provide an asset to the campus and the community there along Lincoln Way as well. As mentioned, my immediate plan is to go on Sabbatical, including Friday. I'll be heading off to Greece for a couple of weeks. And after that, I'm planning to prepare courses to teach at IU South Bend in our online program. And, and I'm just waiting to see if I will stay in the community or not. But I've certainly had a wonderful time here. This is a very generous community. You've been generous to our campus, and it's so appreciated. And I just want to, again, thank you all for your work and hopefully many more years of cooperation between the city and IU South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, if it's in the public, anybody from the public that would like to share your thoughts? Please come forth, state your name and address and share your thoughts. In favor.
My name is Janet Kiyaba. I live at one five four four nine State Row twenty-three in Granger. However, this gentleman is my former boss's boss. I have been hanging around at the university for four chancellors, and of the four chancellors, this is my favorite. For my twenty-fifth year at IU, I got this real pretty picture frame with a clock that says, "Thanking you for twenty-five years of service." Yes, I was five when I began. I made an appointment to have my picture taken with this chancellor because he's been a great person to work for. The community loves him because they know that at his innermost part, he cares about our students and our talent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition, risk getting that ass?
Motion to adopt by a committee.
Cool. All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
All right, a vote, okay.
Thank you. It's good to be able to stick around. Thank you, straight there.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
Coming over? Shoot.
Thanks. All right. You're good, you guys got it. Titans. Titans. All right. Titans. Titans are funny.
Hey, I fallen down that car over there before. I laid on there.
I probably was down.
Certainly was. Now, if we get to a moment.
Too fast.
Okay. Mark from the city, I don't know who's here representing the cities, all right? Oh!
Okay, that is good. I'm sorry. The linebacker update. Um, Hesey. Hesey. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Skyler Mudd. I'm standing for Nathan tonight.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
He's on an exciting trip. We're launching scooters in Indy right now.
Oh, hi.
He got called down there. So, I came in to answer any questions that you guys may have for the update.
Just give us a brief update of what's going on, some of your own viewpoint.
Um, just recently, we launched an Elkhart, which so far we've seen some good success. We have, we launched our new single speeds there.
Okay.
Pretty fun. They look like our three speeds. And still in talks with the city about future new vehicles that we have, like the scooters, still in talks, nothing for sure yet on that. It's been a good summer.
Yes, it is. But if people are leaving their bikes, how is the recovery, in terms of recovering the bikes and thinking about how is that going so far now?
We actually came up with a new system to divide up the city better so that we can make sure we're getting all the areas, not forgetting any.
Okay.
And so, we've implemented that, and it's been going good so far.
That's good to know. Questions, Ms. Williams-Fresson?
When you said one speed, three speed, are you saying, are those the bikes that have motors, or what, what are you talking about?
Those are the number of gears. So, our, our first-generation bikes with solid green wheels, those are a single speed, so you couldn't change gears, you just have one. And the three speeds are nice, so if you have a hill or something, you can just change the gear real quick, and it makes it easier.
So, now we have the three speed, is that what you said, here in town? Or are you...
Yeah, there's, in town, we do have the single speed, the original one, and the three speeds.
Okay. I didn't know that. Also, I have a question about procedure. I love line bikes. I think they're great. I'm excited to see them everywhere. Everyone's using them. Kids especially, it's really awesome. Whole gangs of children on line bikes, very natural. I did have an issue, though. Someone left a line bike, like, right on the corner of my alley, and it stayed there and 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 fell over and got run over, and, I mean, it was just a mess. What's your process? I did finally, like, call an eight-hundred number. It took about three weeks, but I think somebody finally got it because it disappeared one day. What's your process on that? Is that like the procedure, you just call and tell people, or do you automatically go get stuff, or...
We do have people that go out every day that patrol the city, and when, if a customer or a citizen notices an issue and calls the number on the basket or on the bike and reports it, then we get a service ticket. And then, once we get that, then we have a person that goes out and that stops too. And we try to have a twenty-four-hour turnaround when we do receive the service tickets.
You try to do twenty-four hours?
As soon as, as soon as we receive them.
Okay, good. And are we, is there any thought of having the motorized bike? I thought I heard something about that.
There's been some talks. At the right now, there's not much of a progress to it. Personally, I'd love to see them here, they're fun. They're a lot of fun. I want to use it on the bike trail, but...
Anyone down, if, if it...
Yeah, safety and education endeavors, what are you guys engaged in in terms of, you know, trying to hit those topics with youth, high school, folks who haven't ridden before or don't ride much? What's, do you have anything built into your business model that actually addresses those issues?
Yep, and actually, on our, on all of our vehicles, we have key details to it. It says, always wear a helmet and use safety gear. Whenever we go to an event, we try to talk with everyone and just educate them about the features of the bike and the safety things too, and to follow all the local traffic and bicycle laws. We just try to get, you know, just education.
And is there a, a ability to, if you're a local employer, to actually subsidize someone's bike use for, let's say, a month, for their first month of employment? Are there ways to do that?
Yes, there are.
Would you mind addressing that or guiding us how to do that? If I'm a local employer and I want to make some new hires, I know my hires are challenged with the transportation needs, how do I subsidize that use?
Well, we do have a few avenues. The, probably the easiest route would be to get in touch with the local employee, and then we could either set up, sometimes we could set up coupon codes that someone could prepay rides for essentially, and then whenever that employee wanted to use it, they could use one of their coupon codes.
Okay.
Or they could put in a, say, get one of those prepaid debit cards, and they could put that on file in, in the person's profile until that's used up, and then they could, however they want to do it from then on. But in, in our app, we have a, a direct pay feature, so you can have your debit card attached to it, or you can set money aside ahead of time in your wallet and use it just for...
Drawdown on that. Now, is that a new feature, or has that been in place all along?
As far as, I know it wasn't there at the beginning, but we've had it for a while.
Okay. So, would you maybe be able to help with some publicity on that, or like getting that out? Because I, I know that is a significant challenge.
Absolutely.
For, you know, just bridging that gap. You know, you get your first paycheck, you might have the ability to fix the car that, you know, has been in disrepair, therefore then you're often going to work on a regular basis after you get your first check.
That's true.
With that bridge.
There are lots of things we could do, and the first thing that comes to mind when you mentioned that was on our Facebook page. We could put a little statement on there about it. And then, at the few events we have coming up this month and next month, we could let people know about that, too.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Wardy has a question.
Off the top of your head, how many bikes are in use and how many times, I don't know how you keep track daily or weekly, are your bikes used?
Well, we have, we do get a report every day for the number of trips per vehicle, they call it. When I looked yesterday, we were at point eight-five trips, I believe it was. I can find out for sure afterwards for you, but...
How many bikes in use?
Somewhere around there. So, we have seven hundred and, um, just under eight hundred right now, as, as of eight this morning, so, under rides.
Okay.
But we do, but we do have someone else carting out, too, which would be on a different list, but so far...
Thank you. Ms. White?
I have a question. I don't know what could be, you know, what you could come up with. Throughout the community, you see the bikes, and they're just, you know, laying on the ground, or is there any way that we could maybe have racks, I don't know, you know, for the bikes so they're not just thrown and, you know, on the sidewalks and alleys?
We do have, there's some talks going on right now for some solutions to that. As far as bike racks go, we do make exceptions with certain cities if we have to come to an agreement on it. But we do have a rack-free model where you can park it anywhere. That's part of how we have it designed for everyone, but we do, we do work with communities to, to come up with solutions.
I know the citizens, they love the bikes, but what happens when the bikes are not in operation, becomes a eyesore? And also, how many bikes...
you mentioned that was on our Facebook page, we could put a little statement on there about it. And then at the few events we have coming up this month and next month, we could let people know about that, too.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vorti has a question.
Off the top of your head, how many bikes are in use, and how many times, I don't know how you keep track daily or weekly, are your bikes used?
We have, we do get a report every day for the number of trips per vehicle, they call it. When I looked yesterday, we were at .85 trips, I believe it was. I can find out for sure afterwards, for you, but...
How many bikes in use?
Somewhere around there, so we have 700 and just under 800 right now, as of eight this morning, so. But we do, we do have some Elkart now, too, which would be on a different list, but so far...
Ms. Watt?
I have a question, I don't know what could be, you know, what you could come up with. Throughout the community, you see the bikes, and they're just, you know, laying on the ground, or, is there any way that we could maybe have racks, I don't know, you know, for the bikes, so they're not just thrown, and, you know, on the sidewalks and alleys?
We do have, there's some talks going on right now for some solutions to that. As far as bike racks go, we do make exceptions with certain cities if we have to come to an agreement on it, but we do have a rack-free model, where you can park it anywhere, that's part of how we have it designed for everyone, but we do, we do work with communities to come up with solutions.
I know the citizens, they love the bikes, but what happens when the bikes are not in operation, becomes eyesore? And also, how many bikes have you lost, you know, have they damaged?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know the number to eyes.
Just come up front and identify who you are.
Hi, Tim Corcoran, Director of Planning, 14th floor of this building. To answer your question about the parking areas, right now, we are trialing, or about to trial, what we're calling preferred parking locations. And this isn't a dock, it's not, you don't have to park there, but what we're trying to do is, we've looked at a lot of the data of where the bikes tend, like, where they're most used. We're also kind of cross-referencing complaints, if those things sort of overlap, and, and we're going to launch three pilot places at the moment, and working with LimeBike to help incentivize people to park in those locations. So we've got some bid specs written up right now, it's really just paint and potentially a little bit of concrete, and maybe kind of defining the space with some vertical standard off-the-shelf bike rack things. So that's what we're trying to do, and you'll see one out in front of the county city building fairly shortly, probably within the next two months, and then, from there, we're going to start looking at other areas.
Anything else you'd like to, any final questions, Rob Cott?
Thank you.
Thank you again for your report, appreciate that. If there will be no reports from the city, Mr. Cochran, you representing the city tonight?
Marco.
Who?
Marco.
Oh, Marco, hi, sorry.
Hi, I'm coming to report.
Okay, no problem, I'm good, I didn't, I just didn't see you over there. Normally, we sit over there, okay, I apologize. Motion to, move into the committee of the whole. Move.
Second.
All those say aye. No opposed, is here.
The committee of the whole is now in session, this is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against, your comments will be limited to five minutes per bill. With that, would the city clerk please read 1418?
Mr. 1418, there's been a...
You're right, I'm sorry, could I, that's right, there's been a request to continue 1418, could I entertain a motion to continue?
They would like to continue to July 23, 2018?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 2318?
2318, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at Chapter 17, Article 2, Division 3, Section 17-A, that, to revise local pre-treatment standards for the city's national flood and discharge elimination system, NPVX.
Is there a committee report, please?
Uh, yeah. The utilities committee brings this to the council, full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Actually, do not see.
Seriously?
Anybody here?
Anyone in the audience just want to give this one a shot? No, I'm kidding. I will entertain a motion to continue to the next council reading.
So move.
July 23.
29.
29, someone has to be here.
July 9.
They have to.
Yeah, they have to be here.
Yeah.
July 9. July 9.
July 9, 9, right?
Yeah.
So there's a motion to continue to July 9, is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 2418?
2418, public hearing on an ordinance initiated by the area planning commission of St. Joseph County, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 2 residential districts, Article 3 commercial and excuse districts, and Article 7 general regulations to revise off-street parking regulations.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
Yes, the zoning legislation brings us to you tonight with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the area planning commission with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. The bill for you this evening, it takes a look at our parking regulations system in the city of South Bend, and comes up with a comprehensive approach to update the ordinance, and bring it in line with home standards. Since 2004, we have found there's been many gaps and many things within the parking regulations from the zoning ordinance that don't really fit with the urban character of South Bend. The Department of Community Investment has worked with the area planning commission to come up with the revision before each night. This comes to you from the planning commission with a favorable recommendation, and Michael Vida is here to help as well, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
We have a petitioner, please.
Good evening, Michael Vida, Man and Women of the Community Investment Offices on the 14th floor of this building. So I, Community Investment, would please develop this proposed ordinance amendment in cooperation with the area planning commission staff. So as Angela mentioned, the zoning ordinance's current parking standards are based on state suburban calculations that do not speak well to today's realities in urban contexts. The existing standards lead to an oversupply of off-street parking, requiring dealers to go at the expense of building parking that they will never use, and which don't contribute to city quality or to its tax base. So using aerial photography, we analyze the current parking needs for various land users locally, to better calibrate the required minimums. Property owners can still provide more parking if they see that demand. So the proposed amendments would also provide greater flexibility in how off-street parking requirements are met, including by allowing some reduction in required off-street parking required in their bus routes, or by providing additional bicycle parking. So these changes and others within this ordinance will be particularly helpful in advancing neighborhood scale remodeling on smaller lots. So following the ordinance, with this improved graphics and simplified provisions, it'll be easier to use both by property owners and by staff after your approval, but also be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from council, for a presenter or a petitioner? Seeing none at this time, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed, back to the council, with your pleasure.
Move this bill, go to council favorably.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 2718?
2718, third reading on... 2718, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 2, Article 9 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Section 2-131.1, to require periodic sexual harassment awareness, we've been trained for all city of South Bend employees, all city of South Bend elected officials, and all city of South Bend employees.
Could I entertain a motion to accept the second substitute?
So move. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, public hearing on the second substitute bill, 27-18, we send just to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Yes, I'm Oliver Davis, I'm the sponsor, and I live at 1001 Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613. I'd like, first of all, to thank all of you all for your input, we had a good discussion this afternoon, and which led us to move forth with a second substitute regarding the sexual harassment ordinance that we're looking at. I would like to go over that real quick, if you take out the second substitute bill, 2718. As we learned this afternoon, the Human Resources Department of our city has already, are in the process of really emphasizing these issues already, and we are very glad to know, and so we wanted to acknowledge that part, so, and the first paragraph there, we added a section that says, "To the training already provided a new employee orientation." It was good to hear that they have been working on that, and we've been working together. So that was also added. If you look over, and you skip over to the second page, under Section C, we had a discussion today, and we have added, "Each supervised employee is required to complete a minimum of two hours of interactive sexual harassment awareness and prevention training each calendar year." Our original part had talked about every, every, so it makes sense that with everything going on, it's good to have an understanding where this would be done on a yearly basis from that standpoint. So supervised employees, for the purpose of this section, will be identified as employees departmented, so, and Human Resources, and which includes any full or part-time employees with authority to hire, try to promote, transfer of discipline, and employee. And from my meeting this afternoon, there was another section, the last one, Section 1, right, it's, they remember, well, the letter I, it says, "Beginning January 1, 2019, the training required by this section for supervising employees shall be completed by the new employee within 90 days after employment begins. The training required by this section for non-supervised employees shall be completed within 30 days after employment begins." So that was the changes that we looked at to match up our discussion that we had this afternoon. All right, before I proceed, are we all clear on those issues? Mr. Palmer, our turn.
Yes, there is one additional change.
Thank you.
I was going to pick up because it's a temporary, so, in Section A, the final sentence, trying to employ is not including seasonal or temporary personnel, has been eliminated, so seasonal and temporary personnel are included within such, that's correct, so.
That was to make sure that everybody, whether seasonal or temporary, has some type of training for that point. Some people are here just for the summertime, or for the winter, or short-term, but when they walk into the door, we want to make sure that everybody has the knowledge of what is currently providing sexual harassment prevention. Now, are we all clear? We are, anything else I may have left out with all of that? So again, like I said earlier, the idea came, I'd like to give credit to the state legislature, they had worked on a similar bill in our Indiana State House, past session, and this will help to, as far as our attorney said, we could be as one of the first municipalities instead of Indiana to initiate this kind of ordinance in our municipal code. I believe this is important for us to all stay up to date, and be educated yearly about what we can and cannot do in terms of our interactions with each other, while we at work, at work, on social media, away from work, all the interactions that we have, things that were, people were allowed to do five, 10 years ago, now are being shunned upon now, and who knows where life will go three, four, five, 10 years from now, as times change. And we, as city leaders, need to be at the forefront of all of those changes and issues, and so this is something that helps protect men and women, all of us, as we all interact with each other, and our interactions peer-to-peer, and supervisor-to-supervisee kind of relationships. And so, I present all of these, I'd like to again thank our council attorney for the research he did, Mr. Palmer, Ms. Aladeen Rose, and also our Human Resources Director.
Thank you for coming tonight, I tell you.
And please state your name and address.
Kira Park, Director of Human Resources, I have offices on... Kira Park, Human Resources, office on the 12th floor of this building, Administration and Finance. I think we're all on the very same page, that we want to create awareness around this very important issue, and so we're excited with the opportunity to help implement your vision, Councilmember Davis, and all of the council.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you.
Wait till the end, is it the end of your presentation?
Um, anything else that you need to add? We're good?
Happy to answer any questions.
No, we're good, we're ready to answer questions.
Jake?
Ms. Clark, had you seen the second substitute?
Mr. Palmer sent an email, and so I, I did, and also reviewed it as, as Councilmember Davis was going through them.
Okay.
So in terms of those three changes, those are things that won't create a too terrible burden, or, I mean, you know what I'm saying, can you incorporate and make those changes?
Sure, I think we can, I think it will, it will probably be helpful for us to show a video.
Sure.
Which is something we're happy to do, and so, yes, absolutely, we can, we can make it work.
I think some of us felt that the temporary and seasonal employees, while they already get an orientation, that doing a little, you know, doing more, in some ways, because they may be, have more exposure, because they are temporary, and, so, really appreciate that willingness to work within that, and to try to hit that group. Of course, what we do, you know, depending on how long an individual stays with us, it could be a month, it could be three months, it could be 25 years, right? So where they go from here, so, you know, our policy can help set some bars for, you know, educational bars for those individuals, but as they go elsewhere out in the community, this knowledge can spread, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Vorti?
Yeah, I wonder if the, it just occurred to me, I wonder if the council wouldn't consider adding elected officials to the list of people who would...
We are, yeah.
We are, it's in there.
Oh, I made sure. It's in there.
We're right here, right there.
That's what I felt targeted.
Section, Section 2, Sexual Harassment Awareness and Prevention Training for city of South Bend, elected and appointed officials. Oh, yeah, that's one of the things that the state legislature needs, because of that. Because again, we have to make sure that we know, a lot of things change for us, too, and I appreciate all of us elected officials looking at that, because sometimes, you know, you require elected officials to have kind of requirements, or kind of things like that, it's always an interesting role in that, but something like this person, I like to be educated, I want to know, and as a licensed clinical social worker, I have to be updated on ethical issues all the time, and things change, as we all can see.
Yeah.
Thanks. You're welcome, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that, as we, as we got together after committee and talked about this, I think we felt that, as Councilmember Broden pointed out, that perhaps the seasonal and temporary employees might actually be more vulnerable to this type of harassment than, than even part-time or full-time employees, and so, even if it's just a video, I think that it's, you know, we want to do something upfront to make sure that they're aware that we take this seriously, and what the process is by which they could go about reporting these kinds of things, and so on and so forth, and so, I think that's, that's why we wanted to amend this ordinance, or how it was from committee, to read how it is now.
Ms. Smith? Seeing no additional, seeing no additional questions, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed? We actually already did it.
Yeah.
With that, I will entertain a motion from the council on the second substitute.
I'd like to make a motion that the second substitute bill, 27-18, we send to the, well, full, full council.
Yep, favorably. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you so kindly.
Absolutely. I will entertain a motion to rise and resolve from the committee of the whole?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
So council is now back in session, select for Ms. Cochran to please read Bill Number 23-18. Did I forget something?
We'll do, we'll do 30.
20?
2418.
2418.
24, oh, yeah, 20.
Okay, that's fine, 2418, I got you. 2418.
2418, third reading on an ordinance initiated by the area planning commission of St. Joseph County, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 2 residential districts, Article 3 commercial and excuse districts, and Article 7 general regulations to revise off-street parking regulations.
Okay.
Look for the passage of Bill 24-18.
Second.
Yes, could you please now take the roll?
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
It passes. Now, could you please just read bill substitute, the second substitute, twenty-seven eighteen?
Twenty-seven eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article nine of the South Bend Municipal Code to add section two dash one thirty-one point one to require periodic sexual harassment awareness and prevention training for all City of South Bend employees, all City of South Bend elected officials, and all City of South Bend appointed officials.
Make a motion for the passage of the second substitute?
Second. Okay, can we now have the roll call?
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
That is correct. And now we will proceed for our resolutions. Resolution, I have eighteen fifteen.
Eighteen fifteen. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at one twenty-two Milton Street.
Okay. Just for purposes of public hearing, could we hear both eighteen fifteen and eighteen twenty-four together?
That is correct. Then we would like for our clerk then to read the resolution, I mean, eighteen twenty-four?
So moved.
Say again, question?
I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move forward to reading eighteen twenty-four, please.
Eighteen twenty-four. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at one twelve, Indiana.
Okay, thank you. Miss, before we go with the zoning annexation committee met, and we bring both of these bills to the full council with a favorable recommendation tonight. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission, offices located on the eleventh floor of this building. Petitioner for you this evening is seeking to rezone, or not rezone, to seek a special exception for the properties located at one twenty-two Milton and one twelve Indiana. The zoning will actually say single-family, it just allows for this as a special exception use with your approval tonight if it still passes. They are both, at one point were single-family homes, and both have been converted to multifamily, but due to legal non-conforming expirations, they sat vacant for longer than twelve months, and now the petitioner is bringing them back through the process this evening. And this is the property at one twelve Indiana. These are the two homes in question. One twenty-two Milton comes to you with no recommendation from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals. One twelve Indiana comes to you with a favorable recommendation. There is no one to speak in favor or remonstrance at either hearing. If you have any answering questions?
Any questions from Ms. Smith? Okay, as I present you.
Hi, Ted.
Brian.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking, he's right in the back. Please come forward.
He was in the room.
Yeah, he's thinking about California.
The long as the great weather.
I'm telling you.
Yep.
Please state your name and your address, please.
We have Brian Horowitz, BH Investments, two-two-six-nine Chestnut Street, San Francisco.
All right. Please share your thoughts, a summary of what.
Do you want me to do the same thing as I did earlier?
You can do that, or you can just give us a summary of what your thoughts are.
Okay, yeah, well, as we discussed, I would really like to improve South Bend and, you know, rehab these properties and turn them into really nice places instead of the high water that they are currently. And like we discussed, there is ample parking in the neighborhood of each of them, street parking, and then there are also multiple duplex and multi-unit properties in the neighborhood, so it will affect, you know, the character of the neighborhood in any way.
Um, you shared earlier too, that you, since, and I think this is good to put on the record, given the fact that you do live in California, you have somebody here that manages to do that again?
Yeah, I do have C.D. Hendrick with B.C. Holdings, and she manages all of my properties in South Bend, and that's, we make sure and, you know, keep the units looking good, you know, and, you know, within the community and.
And you come here, you say once a month?
Yeah, I'm here about once a month, just to kind of make sure everything's, you know, going, going well with the rehabs and whatnot, but, but she manages, you know, the tenants and collecting the rent, and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, repairs, the small repairs and stuff.
Appreciate that. Questions, comments?
Your properties are, they registered on the landlord's registry, I guess?
You know, I actually didn't know that that exists, that you're talking about with the code enforcement. Angela was actually just telling you about that today.
Okay.
And so I'm planning to, you know, register with them. A lot of the guys that do the code enforcement and women know who, who I am, so, you know, I'm making contact with them. Some of the houses have been run down, so, you know, they've communicated with me, and, you know, we've kind of gone back and forth, so sometimes, you know, I'll get a group of homes and I can't, you know, immediately get to them, so we just communicate, and I let them know, you know, a plan on when I'm going to get to it.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We would now like to open it up for public, those who like to speak in favor. Let's go with bill, just, we still have the whole public hearing in one, correct? Let's, either one of these bills, eighteen fifteen or eighteen twenty-four. We're voting on separately, but we can hear the public hearing together. Anybody like to speak in favor? Anyone? Same opportunity, if anybody like to speak in opposition. Public hearing is now closed.
Motion for the adoption of eighteen fifteen?
Second.
Okay, could we have our roll call, please?
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Eight ayes. Now, um.
I'll make a motion to adopt eighteen twenty-four. A second?
Okay, now can we have the vote on that? Also, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you so kindly, and they all passed, and you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Now, can we, we have a reading on eighteen twenty-three.
Eighteen twenty-three. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at one seventeen South William Street.
Yes, zoning annexation meeting, this is favorable.
Good evening, Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission, offices located in the eleventh floor of this building. The property you're looking at here on William Street has been in operation as a commercial parking lot since about two thousand and five. It was just discovered this year that they did, however, not go through the proper approvals at that time, and so we're kind of catching them up with what they need to do. A commercial parking lot in a mixed-use district is a special exception, so they're before, they're here for you this evening to seek that special exception to allow the continuation of this lot. It comes to you from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, the favorable recommendation, there was no one, there's, there's no one to speak in favor, and one neighbor to the south came and asked for some additional screening, so it comes subject to screening on the south and on the east of the property.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? We're good. Our presenter is Mr. Feeny. Welcome to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
My name is Bernard Feeny, registered Lancer Bear, seven fifteen South Michigan Street, here in South Bend. I'm here this evening on behalf of Michael Coyne and Mary Coyne Investments, owners of the property of one seventeen South William Street. Mr. Coyne was unaware of the requirements for the parking lot, and Angela said he did purchase the property in two thousand and six. It is the former site of the DAV building and parking lot that was on William Street for many years before this became one of the fixtures there. The Coynes operate a number of parking lots, surface parking lots throughout the city of South Bend, and this is one of them. They are more than happy and have asked us to get everything into compliance for this lot. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Feeny at this time?
Mr. Feeny, are the commitments to add screening in writing?
I think the approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals was, if I'm not mistaken, and Angela can correct me on that, subject to the screening.
Okay, so condition.
And the owner, I've spoken with the owner besides that, and the owner is going to comply with that requirement.
Okay. Any follow-up, anything? All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we are peace. Now we move to our public, yes, one more question for Ms. Parkman.
There's one more question. So you, Mr. Feeny, expressed that the owners have several other properties, are all, are the rest of them in compliance?
To the rest of my knowledge, Mr. Vorden, the, the fact is, he has not had any contact from anybody indicating otherwise.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to the public portion, those who like to speak in favor, please come forth. Anyone like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Okay, seeing that, we close the public hearing, and we now move for recommendations.
Motion to adopt eighteen twenty-three, subject to the written commitments.
Okay. Ms. Parkman, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Eight ayes, thank you, Mr. Feeny, appreciate you. Welcome, have a good night. Now we move on to bills on first reading. Did we have a first reading for bill twenty-eight eighteen?
Twenty-eight eighteen. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments in the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty-eighteen.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for seven-nine?
Second. I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same sign. It is carried. And now a first reading on bill twenty-nine eighteen.
Twenty-nine eighteen. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in twenty-eighteen, of three hundred and four thousand from General Fund one-on-one, one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven from Parks and Recreation Fund two-on-one, six thousand from Motor Vehicle Highway Fund two-on-two, one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine from Recreation Non-Reverting two-on-three, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three from Donation Request Fund two-seventeen, twenty-five thousand four twenty-five from Liability Insurance Premium Reserve two-six, three hundred and thirty thousand from Resilience Streets two-fifty-one, one hundred thousand from Lowet twenty-sixteen Special Distribution two-fifty-seven, five hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and four from two thousand seventeen Parks Bond Debt Service three-twelve, six hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and two from Hall Fame Debt Service three-thirteen, two hundred and seventy-five thousand County Option Income Tax four-on-one, twenty-five thousand from Park Non-Reverting Capital four-on-five, one forty-six, two fifty from Economic Development Income Tax four-on-eight, seventy-four thousand six hundred from Morse Capital Improvement four-sixteen, and one million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen from Equipment Vehicle Leasing seven-fifty.
Thank you. Motion to send the personnel and finance for seven-nine?
Second. I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same sign. It is carried. Now can we have a first reading on, on bill thirty eighteen?
Thirty eighteen. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in twenty-eighteen, of three hundred and eleven, two hundred and seventy, three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-six from EMS Capital Fund two-eighty-seven, two hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty from Sewer Works Operating six forty-one, one hundred and fifty from two thousand eleven Sewer Bond six fifty-nine, and seven thousand five hundred from two thousand twelve Sewer Bond six hundred, six sixty-one.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for seven-nine?
Second.
I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose the same sign. It is carried. Now we move to unfinished business. Did you have a reading for bill number eighteen twenty-six?
Eighteen twenty-six. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for property located at one-two-three-five West Sevier.
I have moved this be sent to the zoning and annexation committee and set for second reading and public hearing on July ninth.
Okay, that is fine. We have a second on that.
Second.
I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, on the new business, do we have any new business from anybody, starting from the right? Yes, Mr.?
I'm back to unfinished business.
Yes, sir.
Since we did anticipate that bill twenty-three eighteen would be tabled tonight, we're back and check the record, and we, the council has until July fourteenth to pass that ordinance. You comply with the PPA.
It actually, just faces Eric, he's, it's not time-sensitive. It's okay.
Thank you.
I don't care, did we make the correct motion on the last bill? Usually unfinished business we send ABC, or is this, is it just going straight to ZNA?
Um, I moved my notes.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think they do.
Or area plan or something.
No, it isn't, it's not, I don't, there you have it. Um, yeah, BZA, that's what I was told.
Oh, we didn't make it for BZA.
We made it for ZNA.
We made it for ZNA.
Yeah.
So what's, make the correct, can we, what, make the motion to rescind the motion on eighteen twenty-six?
I go to ZNA, but it goes to BZA first.
Yeah, but do we need to call off that eight and everything?
Okay, here we go. Favor, uh.
We did a motion to rescind.
Motion to, you need a motion for favorable recommendation.
We did a motion to rescind.
Motion to rescind, okay?
She said all in favor.
And we got the second.
I'll tell you to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, that is carried. Now we need a recommendation from ABC to send to ZNA. Yeah, it's, this is.
We have the favorable recommendation.
This is correct, then.
Or it just goes to ZNA, doesn't need to go to ABC?
No, it says, it says, favorable recommendation from ABZA, sent to ZNA and council on seven-nine two thousand eight.
Okay, I already did it.
Sorry.
So now we gotta do it.
I just wanted to make the motion. Motion to send eighteen twenty-six to ZNA for July night.
Okay.
I may have misstated it in our meeting, but I apologize. But yeah, it's a favorable recommendation from ABC to send to ZNA and council, but he said was correct.
Sorry. So I'm gonna get to do it again.[1641.62] So, I think you do it again, uh, motion to send eighteen twenty-six to ZNA for July ninth.
You got, Johnny, want a second on that one, since you were first? Um, yeah, that's, uh, second. You need to smell what was in his drink, huh? Uh, please say aye. I'm just, sorry. Peace, peace, peace. I'm telling you, trying to confuse my porto here. All right, good thing I found my notes. All righty, um, back to new business. Anything else that we need to, anybody had a burning issue? All right, new business, anything, um, down first district? Uh, yeah, first, he's second, third, fourth, he's trying to still get it all together. Fifth, all righty, um, any new business?
Four-H Fair starts Friday.
That's true, that's, thank you, Friday. Uh, you got that. All right, um, you send that, huh? Any other new thoughts, Gavin?
No.
All right, and Miss White?
I'm fine.
Um, I will say this, um, we're working on a letter, pardon? You go ahead.
Uh, solid waste management district met today.
Okay.
And, uh, there are, um, there's currently, we only had one, um, responsive bid submission of, for the recycling component, and, um, so that is being reviewed now, but, uh, basically the cost, uh, increases could be, um, as much, between the range of twenty percent up to twenty-nine percent.
Wow.
So, um, just to kind of let everybody know that, and there'll be some obvious coverage in the paper, but going forwards, additional negotiations, trying to, um, identify what the benefit is for that increased cost.
Okay.
Under the new contract, and then, um, in terms of, uh, there was an earlier amendment that was made, um, uh, when we were trying to get the household hazardous waste program equitably funded across everyone throughout the county, um, we were trying to, you know, bring in additional, um, units of government, uh, to help shoulder that service across everyone. Um, all of the municipalities that weren't participating, all but one, um, declined to participate, or all but two, uh, Michawakas coming in with, um, a household hazardous waste satellite site, uh, in lieu of the eleven dollar, um, per person residential, um, uh, fee on the tax rolls, and then, uh, the town of Lakeville, um, had made an offer to do it at the eleven dollar rate as well, um, but the board, because it was, um, there was a July first deadline associated with anybody who didn't onboard, um, that they would have to be turned away from, um, depositing household hazardous waste, so in the interest of still trying to keep that out of our, um, streams and, um, alleyways, these are the chemicals, oils, et cetera, paints, that keep those out of our, um, river streams, alleyways, et cetera, the board, um, voted today to extend that cutoff date at least till, um, December thirty-first. So we're still, we're, um, still trying to work it out.
Thanks, thanks for that update. Um, in transport, uh, we have, um, hired a, um, company that will be looking into helping us to hire our new general manager, so we just, um, bitted that out, we awarded that, and so you'll be hearing about that coming up, so that process is gonna take them probably anywhere from roughly sixty to ninety days, so we are in June, hopefully by, um, August, in summer, in August, September, we should be, um, nailing it down who's gonna be our next general manager. Um, in terms of letter, um, Bob and I are gonna work together, instead of bringing it as a resolution, uh, for those of us who would like to write a letter to our, um, congressional delegation, um, regarding what's going on in Texas and all of that, if you wanna just put together a letter, uh, we're gonna send it separately, so, but it could be the same letter, and we'll be working on it for you, you can just send it, if you don't wanna send it, it's up to you if you wanna send it, so you can show that you're at least reaching out something to your constituencies, that you're advocating in their behalf regarding that matter, and so, if you, it's gonna help us craft something and put together, 'cause it's been an ever-changing flow of issues, so, but at least, I, I do know that in some parts of the, um, state in Indianapolis, they're having a big rallies on, on Saturday. I don't know, I haven't heard anything yet here in South Bend, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if something happens, so look out for that. And also, we've got emails, I see some in the shirts, reminding, it was from the AEP and Sierra Club. Dr. Viner and I, um, responded a resolution on that a couple of years ago, and so, I was going to, I saw the emails, but I, sorry, I, I wanted to send them back to the new people regarding what we did, remember we did that, Dr.? So, to address many of the issues that we are getting, and I think it'd be good to highlight what we did for us, and also to share back with all those who are interested in what our energy plan for our city, because I don't know whatever happened, what, they were supposed to take that down to the state, I hadn't, I didn't even hear any follow-up from that, but I think the amount of time we crafted something together, which was on a bipartisan, um, issue, to help bring South Bend into the forefront to deal with that, um, those who may have spoken that tonight or others, I will try to get an email out to everybody regarding what we've already done, so we can either keep that and see where they wanna go with it, or add it, but I thought that was our, we're all crafted kind of thing, that we all anticipated a couple of years ago. So, it was two sixteen, here for here, so yeah, it's real fresh, so that's all I have. Yeah, okay, so now we move to privilege on the floor. Uh, those who'd like to speak, um, um, please come forth, you have up to three minutes, and, um, we have Councilman Furley, who will be, um, hopefully timing you, and you state your name and your address, and, um, we can proceed for three minutes.
Good evening, um...
Good evening.
This is you councilmembers. My name is Wachyak, and my address is five oh six five five, Cherry Way, Green, Indiana, four six five three zero. And I would like to propose municipal broadband for South Bend, Indiana. As you're well aware, SEC chairman Ajit Pai spearheaded the repeal of the administration net neutrality rulings, um, that took, that took effect on June eleventh. Why that might be important for senior county lawless, this is other facts. Three or four Americans only have one choice of broadband provider. This is due to a two thousand and two SEC ruling that high-speed internet would be classified as an information service which is unregulated instead of telecommunications which is regulated, in hopes that the market would take notice of, but it, it didn't happen. Americans pay at least twice as much for high-speed internet as the European and East Asian countries such as Japan, South Korea, and also Hong Kong, but for much slower speeds. This is because ISBs or internet services as AT&amp;T, Comcast, and Verizon have virtually no competition, and as a result, we're U.S.'s at least ninth in broadband and forty-sixth in mobile speeds, and I believe that we can do better as a county. Other municipalities, there's at least eighty-two of them that have municipal broadband, one is Chattanooga County, so in nineteen ninety-nine, they instituted IRP to provide municipal broadband as competitive services for the city, because they, especially after the two thousand and eight marriage crash, they feared that they didn't have an image, well, they didn't have a image, in hopes that it would help...
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, thirty seconds, and it did, it worked, they have many, sorry, they have many startups from all over who came evacuated with San Francisco and New York, and I believe that we can take advantage of it as senior county is one of the cheapest places in the country, and if we want to make sure that senior county has a place in the future, we need to make sure that we have competitive broadband to help attract people at least my age to come and stay here and add to the businesses to this town and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Um, I am here today with members of the Indivisible Environment Team, Repower Indiana, and, um, I'm with Brad for a deep minute, um, and we are concerned but hopeful residents of the city of South Bend ask for your leadership as Indiana Michigan Power, our local utility, prepares its twenty-year energy plan this year. Oh, I didn't state my address. One four three four, Mary Goldway, number one sixteen, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven. So this plan, known formerly as an integrated resource plan, is very important, as it determines what energy resources INM will utilize to meet customer demand over the next twenty years. This planning period is especially important, because the utility has indicated plans to end the lease of Rockport Unit Two when expires in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and retire Rockport Unit One by twenty twenty-eight. INM must decide what energy sources will replace power from the Rockport plant, which accounts for nearly half of the utility's current generation. In just ten years, it's likely that INM customers won't be getting electricity from Rockport, and that presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for INM to invest in solar, wind, battery storage, and efficiency in communities like Fort Wayne, South Bend, Muncie, and Marion. We appreciate the commitments that in steps the city has taken to address climate change and protect our community from inequitable rate increases, and appreciate the additional steps the city has taken, including passing the resolution of the South Bend Common Council in support of a reasonable transition to cleaner sources of energy for South Bend. Mayor joins the global covenant for mayor, of mayors for climate and energy measures green, to measure greenhouse gas emissions and create a community-wide plan to reduce emissions, and join the mayors for a hundred percent clean energy campaign pledging support for a community-wide transition to a hundred percent renewable. Since South Bend's climate successes hinges upon its energy supplier, we hope to learn more about how the city will meet these goals, and how being involved in the integrated resource planning process can ensure our utility's generation goals match that of our city. Because INM has announced its plans to phase out Rockport, we would like to see robust participation from the city in the IRP process this year, to ensure the portfolio INM generates during this IRP reflects the city's commitment to a hundred percent renewable energy. We respectfully request that you sign a strong public statement urging INM to develop a twenty-year energy plan that phases out the AEP Rockport coal plants and involves communities in planning a timely, equitable, and affordable transition to renewable energy and energy efficiency, creating the jobs of the future as well as reducing pollution in our states.
You have thirty seconds.
Kelly will speak about the details of the pledge, which I had sent out, um, three days ago, two days ago, that you showed up.
Here we go.
What is your name?
Carolyn Bead.
You can get it?
I guess I need to stop holding it over.
Excuse me, council, my name is Kelly Badum, and I live at nineteen five five three Darton Road in South Bend, four six six one seven. Um, and I did, I really appreciate, Mr. Davis, that you prefaced, uh, the, you know, you thought we spoke to the fact that you have done a lot of work at this, and we do appreciate your twenty sixteen resolution, and what we're asking for here, just to try to respond to your question...
Okay.
Is a, um, an individual signature from each of you, and we actually have members here that will approach each of you, if you could just sign tonight what we, what people already read, uh, because we, uh, Carolyn sent it out, so that we can add your signatures to those that already have gathered from Fort Wayne and, um, Muncie elected officials. In August, on the first of the month, on August first, INM will be here in town at their Lakefront Road facility, uh, to continue their IRP workshops that are ongoing all year, and that is when we want to present to them these, uh, statements from elected officials and citizens, letting them know that we want them to go with a renewable, uh, power plan, because there's a real danger that they will choose to replace the Rockport coal plant with a natural gas plan. Um, and natural gas is a popular fuel for the moment, and it's still a finite fossil fuel, it's hazardous to extract and to transport, and, um, you know, sort of the popular fuel for the moment, it's cheap right now, but, um, natural gas is not cheaper than the sun, and it's not cheaper than the wind, and we would rather see INM invest their money, which their, uh, customers end up paying for, in wind farms and solar farms throughout their service region, than to build a cumbersome and expensive natural gas plant that will probably be obsolete before we even pay for it, because, um, renewable power is the future, and the time to make that transition is now, and we've been working with them as individual activists to, uh, try and be persuasive to INM that this is the time for them to be the first utility in Indiana to go with full renewable outside of their nuclear power plant, which is a whole other issue, but actually, uh, has much better operation than what they've got going on in Rockport. We're thrilled, they said they're gonna close out Rockport in the next decade, but we want them to replace that with the future, which is clean, renewable, affordable power that brings jobs to our community and brings tax revenue.
You have thirty seconds.
So, um, we're hoping that you will all sign this pledge that we're gonna be approaching you with once you adjourn, and, uh, that way, well, the, INM will know that the community is strongly behind this measure. Any questions?
Well, no, I'd just like to make a statement myself, um, but that's not back to you, I'm, that part's cause, just for our council, um, you all may, some of you may not have seen what we have already done, and so, what I would encourage you to do, 'cause I was just talking to, uh, our utility chair now, Jake, he's gonna be doing that, we did that last resolution out of, um, utility committee, since Dave was the chair, I was vice chair, so we may, um, consider looking at that and having them come back to talk to the committee before we would put everything on, 'cause I know not everybody had a chance to review that on it before we start our name. You have until what day, you have until August, isn't that correct?
August first.
So, I would just say, for some, yeah, we have a couple of meetings, we have a meeting on the ninth, and a meeting on the twenty-third of July. If somebody feels comfortable enough to put their name up tonight, I mean, it's, it's okay, but if you want to look at what we've done and study that, to get a better understanding of everything else, I would, um, encourage you to look at and putting, and asking them to make a presentation, a brief presentation on the tw- on the utility committee, on the ninth, I want, but, you know, you can just roll it, and so, 'cause that's what I would suggest. Yeah, I'm seeing you, I got it on you now, and so, I'll sit with you. That makes sense to Miss, Miss White?
Yeah, it makes good sense, it's an update.
Okay.
So, so we're requesting an update.
We would like to have an update from you all on the ninth of July.
We'll come back on the ninth of July.
Yeah, it'll be a commit, it'll be at the committee meeting. Yeah, committee meeting at three thirty.
Okay, I can definitely be there.
And so about fifteen minutes, for the supporting and answer period and everything.
So, we're not gonna get the signatures, huh? I have not seen it.
I haven't seen it either, so...
Oh.
I saw it, but, you know, I, I mean, I was gonna respond to what we, give more things, but, sorry.
No, I, I understand.
Literally.
It's all good, it's all good.
So, and in light of all that, I would like for everybody to be up to date with where we are, and that...
And the pledge is already...
I need to turn this for the minute.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's something important, I'm, I'm cool with it.
Appreciate the invitation, July ninth, yeah.
All righty, if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn, anyone?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, good night, everybody, thank you. Yeah, I just, I, yeah, uh, I think you need to look at what we've done, but, I don't want, like I was sharing with them before, I just wanna make sure that, let me cut this thing out. I'm very willing to...